Good evening, I will call the meeting to order, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, Sleen County, Planning and Zoning Commission. I will start off with item one, approval of the agenda as printed. Any comments, need a motion?
I'd like to add one agenda item.
Okay.
And that would be a general discussion after everything is taken care of. No more than ten minutes worth of general discussion.
Just general discussion?
General discussion.
Before we close the meeting? Okay.
A motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a ten minute discussion.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, they approve the agenda as printed with an addition of a general discussion before the closing of the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item two, approval of the minutes of the last month's meeting, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Any comments or changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, we approve the minutes of the May twenty eighth, twenty four meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item two, it's a text twenty four oh one, I will turn it over to staff.
Okay, please find the attached final draft of the resolution amending Article thirteen A to include provisions for solar energy conversion systems. At the May public hearing, staff was directed to, by the commission, to make additional changes to the language in the draft. Resolutions submitted for consideration at the hearing. Staff has made those changes and is recommending approval as written. Options for the commission would be recommend approval of the resolution as submitted. Recommend approval of any minor changes prior to consideration by the county commissioner or make no changes to thirteen A twelve at this time. This is, we're looking at probably, from here, it's going to go to the county commission because of their schedule. We're looking at probably August sixth is when we're going to try to get this scheduled for the county commissioners to, to consider if it's approved this evening. Or if you make a recommendation and direct staff to forward it on. The, with that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the discussion to my board. Let's tear it apart.
All right. I would like to make one comment. I think Commissioner Farrell for, for his email that he sent or his information he provided. I think that clarified, because one of the points before was we had to be greater than six hundred and forty acres to be viable economically.
Yes.
But based on those numbers and that report, it didn't look like it to me. Because there were the lease rates that they were listing and things like that. It sounds like if we, even putting that cap, it doesn't sound like that's going to prevent a potential installation in the future economically.
Sure. Good point, other comments?
Well, to carry on with that, I didn't, I compromised on allowing up to a thousand acres, but I still liked the six hundred and forty. Because if you can't do it in six hundred and forty, it's not worth doing, but that's just a comment.
Right. Well, and I think we currently have it written at six forty.
Up to one thousand acres.
It's been changed in the, in the current product we have in front of us to up to.
Up to one thousand.
Not to exceed a thousand.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah, so six forty.
Do we need to make that the same in the definition?
What page? What section? Let's, let's tear that section apart. Which one you got there, I'm digging, digging. The size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talks about that here.
Yeah.
Twelve sixteen.
Point in H three.
H three.
We're saying not to exceed six hundred and forty contiguous acres.
Yeah, E, section E. On page six.
No, page, page two.
You're, you're starting on page two.
Yeah, page two.
Start on H, H three is where you have to start.
Okay.
Now personally, I'd like to just keep it that way, but.
Okay.
So I think we need to, I think one way or the other, because we've got two different definitions.
Because we're coming back.
Later saying up to.
Yeah, that's why, and, and on page six, now we're coming back to the size. And we're saying something different, see that?
Yeah. So I think we need to.
Decide one way or the other.
Yeah, either make it six forty or change the first section.
Here, solar area does not exceed six forty contiguous, contiguous. And over here, limited between six forty, not to exceed a thousand. But once again, we're not using the word contiguous here. So let's clean that up. Give me some wording there and let's clean that up.
So I would just basically, did you want to look at solar energy conversion systems that do not exceed six hundred and forty contiguous acres? In area, not to exceed a thousand, just to put that same language in there? To make them the same or?
What's the not to exceed for?
The six forty would be the minimum?
Is this, is the, is the not to exceed for this, the solar module? Or is it for all extraneous property owned?
It would be for this, my understanding is from you all, it was the modules.
That's what mine was, six hundred and forty is a module, but you can own up to a thousand acres.
Yeah, right.
As for other additional uses?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that what you guys agree on?
Well, that's what I would clean that up.
We needed to say it that way.
Yeah, I would clean that wording up. And that way, we're not want to say it's a minimum of six forty.
We're saying six, max.
We just need to put a maximum.
Maximum of six hundred and forty acres.
Right, and.
Max six forty.
And, and instead of. Do away with the six forty completely?
No.
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 Well, it's part of the, but still.
No, we want to keep, we want to keep the solar farm, quote unquote, solar module within six hundred and forty acres and then they can, they can own up to a thousand acres, including that.
Why do we want to make them have six forty?
Well, I already explained that in the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I mean, a thousand acres was just grabbed out of the sky. There was no, nothing there to support that. It was just because Douglas County was dealing with a thousand acre farm.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm just curious.
So solar modules.
Let's tie those words together, tie these two sections together.
Yeah.
And clean up the wording.
Okay, okay, so solar module, not to exceed six hundred and forty contiguous acres are, and.
If we just said that and left a thousand out, would that clarify?
Thousand, would that be all right for you all?
Oh man, that's.
Leaving the thousand out. Maximum six hundred and forty acres of.
Contiguous.
Well, it would be the solar module.
Yeah, there you go, clean it up.
Okay, and I, do you want me to do the same thing on six?
Two and six.
Yes.
Six, okay.
Make sure they agree with one another.
Okay.
Because that seems to be our biggest topic of discussion, was the six forty. How we're going to handle the six forty and one thousand.
And I'm going to mention in there, solar modules, I'll specify solar module.
Yeah, because you have a definition of what a module is, so there shouldn't be any, any misunderstanding though.
Okay.
Yeah, when you get that, you can read that back to us. Okay, other comments?
Mister Chairman, I have a comment.
Please.
I have voiced this in the past. I am ready to go ahead with this, but I want it on record that I disagree with the one mile distance.
Well, now.
What section, what section, let's discuss it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Let's find, I know what you're talking about, let's find the section. Is there some wording that we can help clean up?
Because I thought we had the wording down on that.
Page two, two.
Well, I think you do, but I disagree with it. I want it on record, so when it goes to the county commissioners, they will understand that not everyone thought that.
Two, two, is that what?
On two, two, yes.
I'm seeing one area one mile.
Within one mile of each other, yes.
Section two.
Page five.
There's nothing we could change in that wording, you just want, you're against that part of the.
On record that I'm against that part of it.
I'm with you.
I'll vote for it because I understand this has been a long process.
Right.
And I can see that there have been concessions made by other people, but I just want it on record.
There you go.
Hold on, let's don't, let's don't get past that until I get over where you're talking about.
Because I'm going to do another one just like you did, I got another section.
And where are we?
And we're only, it's H two.
It's.
Page two.
Page two on H two.
H two.
H two.
But it's, but we're only talking about limited solar energy conservation system, conversion system, so we're not applying the same thing to large scale.
Doing that to the commercial, no, 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 that's within one, that's not what you're talking about. Check that out Kathleen, because I don't think this is what you're talking about. You're talking about H two on page two?
Yes.
You better read that and make sure that, because I thought you were talking about that.
No, I'm talking about being within a mile of a residence.
That's in this, that's in this one, under limited.
You're talking about a house, right?
Yes.
A house, not adjoining solar farms.
Okay, this is adjoining solar farms.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's only looking at, we're only referring to the limited scale ones, not the large scale.
Not on, on that particular, oh.
Yeah, that's just the definition, huh?
Yeah, looking at H two, it's limited scale solar energy conservation systems.
Because three is the commercial utility scale.
I thought we had that on.
Difference between the two.
We've only got it on the limited.
We've only got it on two, on the limited, we don't have it on the commercial.
And we're mostly discussing the size on the commercial utility scale.
Right.
Page eight.
Is it on page eight?
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, solar panels and array and structures have to be located minimum five thousand two hundred and eighty feet from any existing residence. As measured from the dwelling unless the setback is agreed to by the owner of the residence. And that's where I like it, because it's saying, we're still a mile away, but if we've got anybody in a mile circle, then they have to have a, a chip in the game to be able to say.
That's why I'm willing to vote for it, because it does have that, I still don't like it.
Well, you, you know as well as I do, we had a lot of pushback on, on people, because these are big arrays. This isn't, this isn't a cell tower. This is taking up a lot of land.
Right.
And so we had to make compromises to what people were wanting. And I feel that's a fair compromise as you do, but still, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, other comments?
Do, I think we need to go back to that, page two.
Okay. God, we, we can't even get past page two, we're getting to page twenty five.
But two and three.
Nobody's going to read page three, four, five, and six, so I'm sorry, you better get two right.
We can't even get to page two.
But where we've got the limit on the limited scale, but not on the commercial.
I thought we, I thought we did have it on there, but it's not in here, in here.
There is no limit to the commercial.
Okay.
Did we put it somewhere else, Tim? Is it somewhere else that we have a mile away from another facility?
Other than just what, I, I don't think so, I think that this is probably within one mile of each other, minor structures, other than energy conversion equipment. I think that we did that on two because it was, it was limited scale and we, I think that three is what we concentrated on. If you want me to put that language in there, I'll put that language in two as well, I mean.
And all we have to do is just put that, within one mile of each other sentence into.
Yeah, I, I think otherwise.
Paragraph three.
We'll probably get some, potentially get some pushback down the road.
And we'll get a twelve hundred and eighty solar module.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll just be two.
Yep.
And it's one. So I'm going to include it right after, does not exceed six hundred and forty continuous acres in the area, and then put in that.
Yeah.
As same wording.
Within, and the one mile. Put it in that, right after that sentence.
Right.
That fine falls into place, they're good, doesn't it?
Yeah. Let's see, so, so it would say six hundred and forty contiguous acres in area within one mile of the house residence.
No, this isn't the house.
Within one mile of the house other.
This is, we can't have.
Two of them right next to each other, budding properties.
Within each other.
Two solar modules within budding different.
We have four, four of them decide to locate together.
This will be a different one mile than the one mile we're talking about on the other for the housing.
Yeah. So in contiguous acres in area within one mile of each other.
Yep.
Yeah, tying that sentence back into this one.
Six words.
Right.
But they're important.
I know, but it just, just, that's the spot to put it.
It is.
That makes sense. Okay. Okay, let's move on, other comments?
Oh, we're still on page two.
That's one nice comment.
If not, I'm going to bring up, I want to look at page five.
Okay.
And you know where I'm headed, the soils.
Uh huh. I thought we had that resolved.
Well, I'm reading this and I'm, and I'm not reading what I thought we approved.
Okay.
On B two.
Okay.
May not be located on farmland of statewide importance, I thought we were taking that out. This is where it was, Tim. We were taking that out.
In favor of.
So that they could, we're already going to say class one and class two.
That's what we said last.
Only, and now we're putting in this farmland of statewide importance.
It just wasn't removed.
And that's why I'm reading this is, that's not what we agreed on, is it?
It was not what we agreed on.
That is not what we agreed.
I figured I was going to get shelled on this one.
So glad you read that.
I was feeling I was going to get shelled on this one. Okay. I didn't want to bring it up, I was going to send him to go get some soda pops or something while we talked about this.
I told Tim I was going to use it to see if anybody read this document.
It, it came back and it didn't agree with what we had talked about, you know?
It did not.
Okay, are we?
Just to make sure, so two, all of two comes out then, right?
All of class one and class two, or, no, 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 no. The only thing that you have to change on two.
I think you can just, number two, that first sentence is of no meaning.
I think you can drop the last sentence on one and bring it into number two sentence. C, C S, E S, ECS may not be located on class one or a class two soils.
And then continue with.
That last sentence down to.
To point to.
To number two.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to do away with B one, except for the last line.
No, all we're going to do is remove the last line out of B one and put it as number two.
Make it line two.
That was my next comment. Then it will become part of, line two will be that and not what's in line.
But we'll still keep projects that further enhance climate dot, dot, dot.
Yeah.
Right, we'll keep the subsection one and two.
Right.
But we're going to move that sentence of no class one or two.
Point two.
And do away with that first sentence on two.
Right, we'll rewrite that first sentence.
Yeah, that's, I said half my sentence and I knew I wasn't going to get through this without getting.
Hey, I'm just glad you read the document.
Oh, ye dinger. Well, this is the one thing that I've been picking on, you know? This is the one thing, it's class one, class two.
I told Tim, I said, I'm not going to say anything about this until the very end. I'm going to see who catches it.
Yeah.
Now I know, somebody caught it.
Yeah. Okay, so we agree, the class one, class two is not going to be accepted. Class three has these limitations.
Right.
Okay.
Got that, Tim?
Yeah, so I keep the, I saw, keep the rating of capability class three or above.
You're right, all of that stays.
Yes. Subsection one and two stay.
The only thing that changes is we're going to change the last sentence on one, we're going to strike it and move it down to the first sentence on number two.
That'll be the only sentence on number two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was my mishap there.
Okay.
It wasn't anything unusual.
Okay, good.
I told him to keep it in there.
Did you?
Well, you know, that's one thing that I, I was really hoping we could just.
You're the expert on this.
Push that one right through and nobody would see it.
You're the expert here and I couldn't get that by you, okay. Okay. Anybody want to talk about glare, vegetation, soils, setbacks? We're good with the five thousand two hundred and eighty feet that we talked about? That's going to stay in there.
That's going to stay in there.
It's going to stay in there. Okay. That's the only thing that I had an issue, other people, what do you want to discuss? Lighting, signage?
I think we've done a, a very good job of listening to the citizens and, and, and putting in the information that was important.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close it for my commission and open up the public. Public comment, speak now, five minutes.
Teresa Swisher, forty eight fifty three, East McReynolds Road. I appreciate all your time, because it has been quite a project for, for everybody. There's a, a couple of things that I, I would like to ask you to consider. National Fire Protection Agency, you guys reference eight fifty five. Why not seven eighty also? Seven eighty deals with solar and lightning. And I know it, it's come up before, why, why just eight fifty five? I pulled it up here, I can, so I, I would like.
What section of our?
It is.
What page?
And we'll discuss it.
I have it all marked up here. Look at P, or, excuse me, S? No, it's T, excuse me.
A page.
A page. We just got past page two.
On the printed, on my printed, it says seventeen, but that's not the page you guys have.
That narrows this down.
Oh, twelve, excuse me, I see.
Okay.
Under other standards and codes.
Okay.
So you guys reference National Fire Protection Agency, Clean Water Act, all of those are good. But also seven eighty is, is dealing with lightning from solar panels or from solar energies things. So I'd like to see if you could consider that and also.
Read that off again, section what?
T.
Yeah.
On page twelve.
And what, what are you referring to?
National Fire Protection Agency Association eight fifty five standards.
Yes.
Could you add also eight, seven eighty standards, seven eighty and eight fifty five?
NFPA seven eighty.
Right.
It provides lightning protection system installation requirements to safeguard people and property from fire risk and fire hazards associated with lightning exposure.
So all we'd have to do is add to our.
Yeah.
National Fire Protection Association eight fifty five standards and seven eighty standards.
All right.
Because I, thank you, see we wouldn't have caught that, that's good.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so then also, one of the other concerns I had was on noise. And that would be on page eleven at the very top.
Okay.
Number two, you guys talk about sixty D B A.
Right.
Why not reference the EPA noise standards? And, and the noise standards say it's sixty D B A for people during the day, but like forty five for, for nighttime. And, and the standard says that between nighttime is considered nine o'clock to six o'clock in the morning. So if you just list it as EPA regs on, on noise, then, then you've got it covered. You don't have to specifically say sixty, it just is what the regs are.
You do realize what sixty D B A is?
Mm hmm.
What is it?
It's the noise that they put out, that, how it affects you.
But what is a sixty, what volume is sixty D B A?
That I don't know.
Well, it's.
I mean, I, I, it's, it's a, it's a speaking.
Normal conversation.
It's a normal conversation. But while you're sleeping, it, your, your body knows that it's, it's being subjected to this amount of noise also. And that's why the EPA, it's EPA, yeah, says it should be forty five at night.
In the house, maybe, but you're five hundred feet away from what we're, what we're saying here.
But we should be, I should be a, a mile from it.
A mile away.
A mile away.
Yeah, and, and so maybe, maybe that's okay then.
This is measurable. This is measured at five hundred feet.
Yeah.
You have to be able to carry on a conversation five hundred feet away and not having that material exposed to you.
Right.
So.
So I should be okay.
Of course you should be.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's all I'm saying is, you know, let's, let's consider it.
Because some of them.
Is that something we need to look at?
You know, I deal with eighty D B A where I live.
From what?
I have the interstate within a quarter mile.
True, true.
So do I shut down the interstate because I got eighty D B A? You know, that's the thing.
You're going to sue the state of Kansas because of the interstate?
What are you doing putting an interstate there?
But when you go in your house, if you're in the house with the doors closed and the windows closed.
And there's no way they would have a way of adjusting their noise levels.
Right.
At night, yeah.
Okay, okay, that, that's all I.
It's a good point, but still, it's a good discussion.
Yeah.
It's a good point, it's good to bring it up, yeah.
However, nighttime is not usually when the solar panels will be collecting.
But that's when they transfer.
Yeah, that's when they transmit.
And that's when it, the noise really is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is at night.
No, because there's no battery storage, there's no battery system here.
I was thinking batteries.
Yes, you were.
Another discussion.
Yeah.
Today.
To be continued.
Please not today.
Please don't.
All right, I'm liking what we're hearing, any other discussion from the public, I'm still open to the public. I will now close it for public discussion, bring it back to my commission. Any further comments, discussion, otherwise I will entertain a motion. We do have several changes that are going to be brought up with this.
You want to, I can review those changes real quick before we.
Yes, please do. Commissioners, are we ready to go to that point?
Yes.
Okay, okay, the, the first one is going to be on page two, you said take the, not to exceed twenty contiguous acres on H two. And within one mile of each other and put it down by the not exceed six forty.
That's a copy.
Yeah, just copy it.
Copy it.
Yeah, just.
Just clarifying.
Move it, yeah, yeah, make a copy of that one, just the same, same language, basically is what I'm saying. The other item was under page five, everybody's favorite discussion item with the class one or class two soils. So projects that further enhance climate and food system resilience and press agricultural character by enabling the integration of food production into the design are encouraged. And moving, the no class one or class two soils, that last item, move it down to item number, to part number two.
Correct.
Where it says CS, ECS may not be located on class one or class two soils, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, very good, I got that one. The next one is going to be on page six. And I've got down six hundred and forty, I, under the size, six forty, and taking not to exceed a thousand out. And I'm just, I'm going to emphasize six hundred and forty module area in parentheses. And the, let's see what else is there. I'm going to add under page twelve the NEC document seven eighty, in addition to eight, eight fifty-five standards, National Electrical Code.
It's NFPA.
Or NFPA. Seven eighty of the NFPA? Okay.
That cover it?
I believe that's it.
Yep.
Okay, commissioners, I'm going to entertain a motion. And what we're looking at is there's, without going through all those again, there'll be changes made on page two, changes made on page five, changes made on page six, and changes made on page twelve, as staff has just explained to us. So we don't have to read all those back to us. Those are page two, five, six, and twelve changes that staff is making.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept all the changes and that we have staff finalize this and present it to the county commission.
Second. Do I need that to be a, a motion for the text amendment twenty-four dash oh one?
Yeah.
That's how I need the motion to be made.
No, make it.
I need that as a motion.
I, I motion that we approve text twenty-four oh one with the changes.
As printed.
As printed and added by the staff per the pages you.
In the resolution.
With, with changes.
With those changes.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve text amendment twenty-four dash oh one as printed with the changes that the staff is going to make on page two, five, six, and twelve. I will entertain a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your input.
And just to let everybody know, the commissioners and the public as well, we're looking at August sixth for this to go to the, tentatively for the county.
Yeah, just to give staff enough time to make these appropriate changes, make public notice for the hearing that will become in front of the county commission, and for the county commission to get through a majority of their budget cycle, which they'll be focusing on pretty much in the end of July, I think August sixth is appropriate to get us to that point.
Thank you commissioners, it's been a great discussion.
And I think.
I think we really tore it apart well.
Oh, yeah.
I think the discussion's been great.
And what I was, now I've been asked, I think that you had mentioned something about next month's meeting, holding, you said hold off on the.
Let them have their discussion.
Okay, 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 do y'all want to discuss as far as what you want to do next month as far as the battery energy storage discussion? To start that.
Is that, I was going to, is that what you want for general discussion? Okay, okay, so next item in the agenda is, we're just a general, general discussion before we close the meeting?
No, it's, yeah, just, just to find out if there's, if you want to hear that next month, if you want to start that discussion next month.
I would like for us to get staff started on B E S Ss and get them, let's get going